On this January seventeenth, two thousand and three. Technical issues I think are all taken care of. Good job, Tyler. Did I? Two thousand and twenty-three. All older persons are present in the chamber. Our first item of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Player in lieu of invocation. All right. Welcome, everybody. We're on to item four, which is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. What are your wishes? A motion by Veneman, seconded by Evanson. Any discussions, corrections? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item five, the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter eleven, zoning ordinance of the revised municipal code specifically related to surfacing of off-street parking and the use of gravel for certain land uses, including parkland and other natural resource type uses. See attachment two. And what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Evanson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's, two N's. We're on to item number six, which is considered for approval of Mayor Blazer's appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. See attachment three. Mr. Parker's in the audience. I was going to introduce him to Mr. Kearns, but we kind of had technical difficulties, but that's Mr. Parker there. We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Austin, for willing to be the council appointee, or my appointment from the council. Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Congratulations, Mr. Parker. Get ready for some work. All right, we're on to item number seven is consider a resolution declaring World Migatory Bird Day in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, and we have two representatives here for that. Are you? Can we make sure your mic's on if you hit on the bottom where it says push? No, I don't.
I thought I was loud enough. We had a busy year, and I just want to tell you some of the things we've done. We did purchase a bird kit for one of the local libraries, and we're waiting to get approval from Wisconsin Rapids Library. And it includes two binoculars, a book on birding for adults, and a bird on birding for children. And we donated that to one of the local libraries, and I'm waiting for the Wisconsin Rapids Library to tell us they would approve this. It would be something to encourage birding between parents and children. Another thing we did, we were at the Wisconsin Kiwanis Youth Outdoor Day, the winter one, as well as the summer this year. So we had owl pellet dissection, and this is so children can find out what is eaten by an owl to survive. So they pick apart the pellet, and inside are the bones of different animals, and they can identify the bones. We had a prairie chicken festival, which was well-attended this past year, and we had a booth there for that. We had two activities at McMillan Library. One was for No May, Mo Day, No Mo May. And that went well. Not too many people participated in some of these things, but otherwise, sometimes we had big activities. And we also had a children's activity one other time for Earth Day at the library. We had the Grand Affair, and we did Science by the River, and I did two functions there. I did the DNR program because they were so tied up that they asked me to volunteer. And then we also did one for Bird City, Wisconsin Rapids. So we had two booths together, so we could manage both of them. And right now, we're finishing our application to be considered a high-flyer Bird City again. We were only a Bird City one year. Since then, we've been a high-flyer every year because we have enough qualifications between what community does and what we do as our own group. And we're a branch of Clean Green Action, who actually funds us pretty much because we are good spenders, but we're not very good earners in our group. So Clean Green finances us with about $250 a year to keep us, you know, like buying the binoculars. That was an extra cost, so. So we're just requesting that you fund us again for another year. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? This is something we do every year. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Zachar, and seconded by Rayom. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to consider the adoption and the action of the Plan Commission at its meeting held on January ninth. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at four PM on January ninth in the council chambers. A quorum of members was in attendance. A list of other individuals in attendance is available in Community Development of the Clerk's office. The first item was an approval of the report from the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two Plan Commission meeting. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve the report from December fifth. Seconded by Tao, that motion carried four zero. Member Kubashak entered the meeting at this point. Item two was a request from Teresa Cashman for a special exception from architectural standards for a trash enclosure in a commercial district at thirty-eight twenty-eighth Street South. Staff provided a summary of the request. Jim Lucas, representing the applicant, commented and provided additional details. There was a motion by Fith to deny the request for the special exception due to lacking details on landscaping and the fencing gate. There was a second by Gudrow. That motion carried five zero. Item three was a request from NNN Outlet for site plan review to perform site improvements at six-four-one Dale Street. Staff provided a summary of the request, and a motion was made by Gudrow to approve the request for the site plan review, subject to nine conditions, which are outlined in the minutes. There was a second by Fith. That motion carried five zero. Item four was adjournment. There was a motion by Austin to adjourn, seconded by Kubashak. That motion carried five zero. The meeting adjourned at four eighteen PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. And what are your wishes? We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Austin. Any further? Oh, Mr. Rayom?
Just a question. Kyle, number three, have they met all the requirements at NNN Auto?
So the nine conditions that were recommended for approval, or conditions of approval, did include an updated site plan. So there were some things missing on the site plan. An updated light intensity plan was also provided at the meeting, so we'd have to include that as well in the plans. But ultimately, yes, with the nine conditions, everything would be met.
Because I do believe they're open.
They are open, correct. Yep, there's a stipulation within the zoning ordinance that says operation can occur in the event that weather prohibits site improvements.
Tyler, we're having technical difficulties up here with Mr. Zachar. Oh. Is it? Are you guys plugged in? Yeah. Did I answer a question, Mr. Rayom? Did I answer a question?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So I guess if anybody has, wants to speak, just kind of get my attention by raising your hand, probably not throwing something. Okay, so we'll have to do voice vote. Any further discussion, questions? Yours is running? How about yours? Oh, of course, mine's down, too. Shut it down and restart it. Mine did.
Yep, okay.
All right. Technology is our friend. Thanks, Jay, for your IT skills. So nothing further, please cast your ballots. We'll get it right one of these weeks. So that motion carried seven A's and one Nay. We're on to item nine, consider adoption and the action of the standing committees for the common council. First one is Finance Property Committee meeting held on January third. Mr. Zachar.
Finance and Property Committee met at four oh five PM on Tuesday, January third, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the Finance Property Committee were present. Item one, call the order, called the order at four oh five. Item two, consider for approval a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., at two-six-five-one A Street South for an exhibit opening event to be held from five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM on Friday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve. The motion carried three to zero. Item three, consider a request from GameStop, Inc., doing business as GameStop, number three-two-five-four. Diana Shehajay, agent located at nine-three-zero Coon Avenue, for renewal of the second-hand article dealer's license. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider for approval, two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment, resolution number four. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve the resolution, number four, and the motion carried three to zero. Item number five, out of the bills, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve check numbers one-five-two-five-five to one-five-six-two-five. Motion carried three to zero. Item six, next meeting date was set for Tuesday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at four PM. Item seven, adjourned, moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachar to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. Meeting adjourned at four thirteen PM. That I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Thank you. We have a motion by Zachar. And a second by Evanson. Mr. Rayom?
One more time. Number four. That's the budget resolution. I have a question on the ARPA grant one. If I'm reading it right, I guess, and Tim, you can help me out, maybe. It has water main construction. Might I go into that? Is that?
Correct. In the two thousand and twenty-two budget, is part of that budget process and adoption is, you know, with the raw water main project that Water and Light was undertaking in two thousand and twenty-two, it was decided that for our normal water main constructions that we do on annual basis for two thousand and twenty-two, that we'd use ARPA funds to cover that cost. And so this is just the budget resolution, just appropriating the grant funds to offset the water main expenditures.
My memory short, we agreed to do that?
Yeah. Thank you. Seeing nothing further, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. On to item B, which is Public Works Committee meeting held on January fifth. Mr. Austin, I forgot who the chairman was.
Thank you, Mayor Blazer. The Public Works Committee meeting met on Thursday, January fifth, in the council chambers at City Hall. Myself, Sheri Evanson, and Dennis Pollack were in attendance. Item one, the meeting was called to order at five oh one PM. Item two, review the Engineering and Street Department monthly activity report, which was reviewed. Item three, review and consider setting new degradation fee rates for the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. Motion by Austin, seconded by Evanson to set the two thousand and twenty-three degradation fee rates as presented. Motion carried three zero. Item four, review and consider proposals for the Grand Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Report. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollack to select the proposal from Jewel Associates for $14,000 to prepare the bridge rehabilitation report. Motion carried three zero. Item five, review the referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Items ten, eleven, fifteen, and sixteen were removed. Item six, set the next meeting date. The next meeting is slated for Monday, February sixth, after the Planning Commission at either five or five-thirty PM. And item seven was adjournment. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Austin to adjourn. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Mr. Veneman. Any further? Mr. Bemke?
I just have a question on number three, and the question is, what do we use for criteria to determine what the rates are and how we're going to set the rates and what the rate increases are going to be for those degradation fees?
So we set those annually. We use the prior year's actual rates from contractors to set those. So in some cases, if we have multiple contractors, we'll average those rates. And then we'll apply a depreciation factor in accordance with Chapter six in the requirements specified therein.
So, and that's how you determine what the increases are going to be as well? I mean, we have a rate set.
Yeah, so the calculation stays the same from year to year, the methodology. It's the prior year's bid prices, the unit costs, that fluctuate.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Rayom?
Thank you. Number four, how many proposals did we get in?
We received one proposal.
That's what I thought I was guessing. And just a follow-up, I guess, on number three. Mayor, does it have anything to do with what we got with your email today?
Yeah, that's what the degradation. So I forward to everybody on council here an email that I received from Jim. I was going through my emails and thought it might be worthwhile information for the council to have Water and Light's perspective, and I also sent it to Joe Ickstead. But yes, that was what they were, their concern was.
So should we be having any more discussion, I guess, on this before we vote, or?
Or you can hold it out if there's concerns. We'll have a separate discussion. It's up to the council.
Joe, did you get a chance to see what that email was from the mayor?
Yes, yep, I did review it this afternoon.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see anything necessarily wrong with the concerns. Couple of things that maybe are noteworthy. A distinction from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, specific to Water Works and Lighting Commission. In two thousand and twenty-two, they had a significant amount of those degradation fees that were a part of the raw water main project, upwards of about, I think it was about $52,000 worth. So, I mean, it was a big, it was a big project for them, and certainly that was reflected in the charges that they saw for degradation fees in two thousand and twenty-two.
Didn't they allude to a cost, the big cost to taxpayers and that?
I believe it's.
Possibly?
Well, it'd be a cost to the ratepayers, so it'd be figured into, you know, the rate or, you know, along with other costs, if they have to go for a rate increase, I would think that would be some, you know, a factor that they would highlight that it's a cost.
So the rate over, what your rate would be, not, I guess, individually each time, or somebody?
Oh.
Somebody be getting hit heavy, though, on this, an individual taxpayer?
I don't think it, no.
That's where I was having some time reading through.
Yeah, no, it would be.
With this year tonight.
Yeah, it would be just, you know, it could be a factor in a rate increase, you know, along with other factors, I'm sure, but I think it seems like some of their concern was we figure out a cost per square foot, and, you know, some, or at least, I think the county they work with, it's a permit fee. There's a cost for the permit fee versus a square foot charge. That was another thing they highlighted in that email. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item C, which is the Human Resource Committee meeting held on January twelfth. Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having technical issues, too, so. I got it, thank you. The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resource Committee met Thursday, January twelfth, that two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty PM. Meeting was called to order at four thirty-two. Item number two, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section one-ninety-five-one-E Wisconsin Stats, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss negotiations and strategy regarding possible amendments to the provisions in the city's labor agreement with WRPPA involving new police department hires. A motion was made by Rayom. Seconded by Delaney to go into closed session pursuant to the above statute. Roll call of all taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero. In closed session, discussion occurred regarding new police department hires and hiring requirements. Item number three, the committee will return to open session. There was a motion by Rayom, seconded by Delaney, to return to open session. Motion carried three zero. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval the amendment to the labor agreement with IAFF Local four-twenty-five regarding field training instructor program and revisions to on-duty and off-duty training. Was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Delaney, to approve an amendment to the labor agreement with IAFF Local four-twenty-five regarding a field training instructor program and revisions to on-duty and off-duty training. Motion carried three zero. Item five, consider a request from older person, Delaney, to decrease pay for older persons from $490 a month to $0 per month. There was a motion by Delaney to approve a decrease in pay for older persons from $490 per month to $0 per month. Motion died for lack of a second. Item number six, the wage study update. Discussion took place, no action was taken. And I would just like to say that everybody should have gotten the spreadsheet before the meeting, and I believe Ryan also included the wage study update with bullet points on where we're at, where we're headed, and kind of what's next in the process. Item number seven, a motion by Rayom, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion was carried three zero. Meeting adjourned at five fifty PM. And with that, I'll submit for approval the Human Resource Committee meeting. Thank you. Yes.
We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Rayom. Any, Mr. Delaney?
Can we hold out five, please?
You can ask the mayor.
No, it's up to you guys. Everybody good with holding out five? Oop.
Almost fell backwards.
Okay. Okay. Seeing nothing else, so roll call on the balance of the report. Holding out item five, please cast your ballots. Okay, that motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item number five, Mr. Delaney.
I'd just like to have a full council vote, and I had discussed in the meeting, I'm sure everybody's seen it, if you weren't there, and I just.
Your mic on?
My mic is on. Let me move it a little closer here.
There you go.
Is that better?
Thank you.
So I'd just like a full council vote either way on this. I do think that changes do need to be made to our pay. Attorney Schill had handed out a document comparing cities close to ours in size, and we are much higher paid than the average. Personally, I think the job should be a volunteer job that we come here, and sure, we do make important decisions, and we do important work, but that doesn't mean that we have to be paid for it. We're not public employees, we are public servants. And as such, we should take compensation as a servant does. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Do you have a motion in there? Or does somebody want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to, oh, sorry, it's too close now, to approve decrease in pay for older persons from $490 a month to $0 per month.
So we have a motion by Delaney. Oh, yeah, sorry. Dennis, can you help him? Thank you, Mr. Delaney has made a motion. Is there a second? I guess for a final, oh, thank you. We have a second by Mr. Pollack. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. The motion is to approve decreasing alderman pay from $490 a month to zero. Please cast your ballots. Please cast your ballots. That motion was defeated six As to two Nays. All right, so moving on to item 10, there's reports of other committees, commissions, and boards. What are your wishes? Are we doing them separate now, department reports and?
No, I just No, I just, uh, split out the department reports in case anybody wanted to just look at those separately, uh, I think with a big list of meeting reports and department reports, it can get a little bit, um, confusing, so I just split them out, but you can vote on them all together.
We need to vote on them separately since they're two gender items.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that, guys.
So I'll take the first one. Reports of other committees, commissions, and boards. What are your wishes?
No. No, I don't, you can do them together.
Mr. Reom?
Thank you. Uh, I guess the que, the question would go to Sue probably, um, our city attorney, and that's on, on the West Water, Sue. Number three, I think the last three meetings have had the same, without getting into it here necessarily, but I think that the minutes have been the same for the last few minutes of meetings. Is there any further update on that, or, I mean, I, and I don't want to get into it right now.
Was there an update provided at last, at the last meeting? I, I gave him some information to share, so I don't know, was anyone at the meeting?
There, there was not. There was no update, no.
Okay. Hmm. Um.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's something that we should to do here, is it something that we should have a separate meeting, or a closed meeting or something?
Right, right, the, the, um, I guess I can say that the
Without doing it here.
Right, I guess I can say that the, um, the, what, the closed session direction that was given to the litigation attorney, um, that is what they are doing, and I'm waiting to get materials from them. I think I met, I talked with them on December 19th, I think it was, December 19th, and they were in the process of getting, um, doing what we had requested them to do, so I, they said they were going to send something for me to review, so I don't have that yet. And all of the billings are, have been sent out, we're, you know, current with sending out all of the billings, I know that was a question of whether that had been accomplished, and it has been.
Is, is there any, I guess, how, do you see what the minutes are there, Sue? Just how that's worded at the end, waiting to hear, is there, am I reading something into it that isn't there, or expecting to read something into it that's not there? 11th was the last meeting.
Yeah, that's, um, that's not correct. I think maybe those minutes were just not changed from the month before. Yeah, I don't even know what that means, waiting to hear about original contract. I had sent something for him to sh, share with you, an email, but I can, I mean, I basically kind of provided it, but I'll, I can make sure that you all get that.
Okay, I just forwarded the update. I just forwarded the update to you on email. That was, uh, provided. The report. Yeah, we're just, the motion, the motion is going to be the reports on file, the reports and, uh, department reports. Thank you. Did I answer your question, Tom? Okay. Any further questions, comments? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, Jake, sorry, I didn't get to your email till now, but I just had a question, I, um, wasn't able to attend the Parks meeting, and it was hard to hear on there, it was on, because it was in the conference room, so I was like, what, what? And I know you guys kind of lost Jake there too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, just with the, the pool chemical, and I just, because I don't know pool chemicals, but I was just kind of looking into some of the, you know, comments about it. So, we're changing from liquid chlorine to, to this, because it, and it's going to be cheaper?
Yeah, we're switching over to Cal hypo.
Okay.
Switching over to CO2 and using the Cal hypo, we'll probably save, uh, estimated just this coming year, $7,000 on what we would be spending on sulfuric acid and then liquid chlorine.
Okay, and then, because I was just doing some research on there, and what I was reading is that with the Cal hypo, it doesn't have stabilizer in it, so that's something else that you would have to add, so?
Yeah, we always have been using stabilizer.
And then, the calcium hardness, it says sometimes you, it could make it white, or that stany color, you know? If, if it's not disintegrated properly and stuff, but we've, just make sure that we have all our ducks in the row, so it's like, oh, now we're using this, we didn't, you know what I mean? It's like, okay, now we have to buy this to?
We've always been using, uh, calcium hardness as well, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
I did find it interesting, the pool was set up to be for an indoor pool, or how did that go?
No, not totally, they just had some instruments on there that would read free chlorine that we didn't need, so Carrico is swapping out parts for the parts that we took out that we're not using.
That's what it is, yeah. And that's where the parts are, and that swap's going to happen.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Okay, I have one more question, sorry. So with the, in the chemicals, the usage of that, we don't have to get any different permits or anything like that?
Um, no, we are, we're, um, sending everything to the state, just so they have our updated records on what we're using.
Okay, and the only other thing I saw on there, which I'm sure you investigated already, but they said the use of this powder, right? Tablets?
Yeah, it's like a hockey puck type.
Right, tablet. That it burns up faster in the sun for outdoor pools, so
Correct.
Whoever you've talked to, they
Yep.
It's still, will still save money, even though this type of chemical's going to burn up faster.
It's, um, yeah, he was correct on when he was saying that, but the amount that we're going to be using in the Cal hypo is going to be very small compared to what we would be looking to using the liquid chlorine. So we're looking at 44 cents, I think, to the pound, and almost $1.79 per pound for the liquid, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballot, place season file. All of the reports on A and B. Are we voted, are we like frozen?
Connecting again.
Who? Okay, everybody, how about all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, that motion carried. We are on to referrals to other committees, if you've got anything, please send them to the clerk.
Um, I received a referral from Alderperson Evanson, um, to the Human Resources Committee for a discussion regarding the CSS report, and I received a referral from Alderperson Delaney, um, for the Legislative Committee regarding timing of materials provided for council meetings.
Sounds good. Um, we are on to item number 12, which is adjournment. Is there a motion? We, how about a second?
Second.
I think I heard Tom first and Evanson second. You're good with that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carried. Thank you very much, everybody.